Minnehaha County Planning Commission, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cell phones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www minnehaha county.org site for viewing by the general public. Any action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, May 2nd at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, May 17th at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date. Meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. Action taken on the rezoning applications during the public hearing tonight are a recommendation that will be forwarded to the county commission for another public hearing on Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, at or after 9:00 AM. Meetings of the county commission are held in this same room, and the decision of the county commission will be final. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the March 28th meeting are included in the consent agenda. Does any Planning Commission member wish to have an item removed for discussion? Next, I'll read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the staff or the audience, and if a member of the staff or the audience would like to be heard on the item, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Item number one on the consent agenda is approval of minutes of the March 28th, 2022 Item number two is conditional use permit 22-29 to transfer one building eligibility from tract 1, Neerman's addition, to the north 660 feet, the east 660 feet, and there is an exception in Neerman's addition, end of exception, all in the southeast quarter, southeast quarter, section 16, township 102 north, range 48 west. That is in Brandon Township. Petitioner is Jacqueline Meisenheimer. She's the property owner. This is along 481st Avenue, approximately one mile north of Brandon. Okay, item number three is conditional use permit 22-32 to transfer one building eligibility from the east half, the southwest quarter, the southwest quarter, and the southeast quarter, the southwest quarter, to the southwest quarter, the northwest quarter, and the northwest quarter, the southwest quarter, and the west half, the southwest quarter, southwest quarter, and there is an exception of H-1, that's the end of the exception, all in section 2, township 103 north, range 50 west. That is in Lyons Township. The petitioner is Wayne and Linda Larson. They're also the landowner. This is approximately three miles southwest of Baltic. Item number four is conditional use permit 22-31 to allow an outdoor industrial storage on the property legally described as lot 3. Har's addition, the southwest quarter, section 30, township 102 north, range 50 west, that's Benton Township. Petitioner is Scott Gordon. Property owner's the same. That's along Highway 38, a mile southeast of Hartford, and I've been told that they want to pull that and move that to the regular agenda. Item number five is conditional use permit 22-32 to exceed 1,600 square feet of accessory building space, requesting 3,264 square feet on the property legally described as lots 1 and 8, block 2, sorum subdivision, section 9, township 102 north, range 49 west. That is Mapleton Township. Petitioner is Jeffrey Christians. He's also the property owner. It's 47497 Northview Drive-In renter. Item number six is conditional use permit 22-35 to transfer one building eligibility from the northeast quarter, southwest quarter, to the southwest quarter, the southwest quarter, section 17, township 102 north, range 52 west. That is in Humboldt Township. Petitioner is Nick and Caitlin Jongling. Landowner is Rick Starnes. This is approximately one mile southwest of Humboldt. Okay, the consent agenda is 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6.
We have approval of the consent agenda. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda except for item number four. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. If your item has been approved, you're free to go. We'll move on to the regular agenda. We'll back to, let's see here, Kevin, you want to do number four?
Kevin Hookman from the county planning department again. Item number four, the legal description has been read for this item. The property is located along Highway 38, kind of across the street from Buffalo Trading Post. The property is an industrial property. Petitioner is building an industrial warehouse where the tenant is liking, would like to use a portion of the property for outdoor storage. Outdoor storage is, does require a conditional use permit in industrial zoned area. The petitioner submitted a site plan. In narrative or review, the tenant for the building is going to be National Tower Controls, which works with communications towers throughout the region. The plan is to store materials and equipment from time to time in outdoor storage area in the south and west of the property, kind of highlighted in blue on that map. The property shares a mutual access onto the highway, off of a paved road. So that is something that needs to be addressed, as any industrial property that has access in a paved road has to have paved surface or hard-surfaced parking. And the site plan also indicates that there's going to be a roll-off dumpster behind the building, and staff recommends that there's something to prevent debris from the dumpster from blowing out of the property. Outdoor storage is a common part of land uses in industrial development. This area has lots of outdoor storage in the vicinity, like a concrete casting company to the west, and another property south of this location that has outdoor storage, and that property has fencing around the entire perimeter of the property to screen the outdoor storage. Screening is generally beneficial for outdoor storage, and it can be used as a block for things that may blow out of a dumpster as well. It has that advantage as well. The conditional use permit criteria has six different criterias to consider. I covered a little bit of the first criteria, that the effect upon the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity of the use is already permitted, and upon property values in the vicinity. This is an industrial project in an industrial park along a busy highway. The use of the property for warehouse and storage should not significantly affect the neighboring properties. I would like to add in this little section that it wasn't long ago that we did deny a conditional use permit for outdoor storage on this property, or not on this property. Nearby this property would be to the south and east of this location where there's other stuff currently being stored and needs to be removed. Number two, the effect upon normal and orderly development and improvements of surrounding vacant properties for use of prominent in the area. This area is developing. New buildings and plaits are a regular occurrence, and this building and proposed storage area will not likely affect future growth in the industrial park. Number three, the utilities, access roads, drainage, or other necessary facilities are provided. This facility will need a septic system designed by the, approved by the state for this industrial site, and as I stated earlier, the property is accessed by a paved road. And so the parking area, which is kind of highlighted as employee parking in the north side of the building, is going to be required to be hard-surfaced according to Article 1504 of the zoning ordinance. The storage area should be covered with a gravel to prevent weeds and other things growing up through stored items. Number four, that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The site is large enough to accommodate off-street parking and loading. There is a parking area for the regular employees to park in in the front of the building, and the parking area is large enough to accommodate required parking. And then five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration, and lighting, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. Again, outdoor storage is, does not typically create a nuisance, odor, fumes, or noise. Lighting should be directed down to cut off, and cut off to prevent glare, and the fence would help prevent unsightliness from the, say, the south property line, which staff is recommending, the closest neighbor, also to prevent the wind from blowing materials Number six, health, safety, and general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan. The proposed use will not likely have a negative effect upon the health, safety, or general welfare of the public, and staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with seven conditions. We'll go over some of the site photos. The site is currently undeveloped, along with, you'll see here that there's vacant, the neighboring, the property directly to the east is vacant, but the property, a couple of properties down, has this new building put up on it. You'll see down the highway here, you can see part of that Buffalo Ridge, and this is down to the east in the highway. This is looking straight south. You'll see that there's the fence. It's really far back there, and it's hard to see, but the, shows the fence of the neighboring property to south, and some semi-trailers being parked in front of that. And that's what I have for photos, so I'll bring back to the main photo here. And I'm here for any questions.
Any questions for him?
Can I ask him a question?
After you come up.
Madam Chair, can I just ask?
Go ahead.
What do they have for driveway now? Is there one there?
Currently, the driveway is gravel.
Who share, do they share, do they share it with that one there then?
So yes, they'll share the driveway with this property, and you'll see on that side map there, there's three properties. So that driveway will service the three properties there, and also will service the property to the east of the property, so they'll have one access on the highway.
Okay, alright.
Yeah. Any other questions for him?
Kevin, how wide is that driveway then? Is it wide enough, being there's three?
So as a current state, I doubt it's quite wide enough for three tenants. It was just constructed, as you can see, this is still under construction, new construction here. It will, that portion of the driveway will have to be hard-surfaced, so I'm sure that that's going to be a work in progress. The actual entrance in and out is very wide. In and out is wide, and it'll be this driveway that parallels the highway. That currently is a little bit narrow, but it would likely widen as more tenants come.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions for him? I guess not right now. Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward and state your name and address, sir?
Scott Gordon, 2912 South Princeton Avenue, Sioux Falls.
Anyone have any questions for him?
Madam Chair.
Doug?
I'm not the brightest guy in the world, but what are some of the things that, you could tell me, what is outdoor industrial storage? What type of equipment?
Yeah, oh, good question. For us, it's just, we call them gin poles, or like gips. Basically, we stack a tower, and we get to a certain height, a crane can no longer reach, so we attach these, you know, ones 12 inches wide, ones 36 inches wide, and you bolt them together in 20-foot sections, and then it reaches over the top of the tower and allows you to keep stacking the tower. But that's the idea, we want to place these outside. They're 20-foot sections, and then they're triangles, and they're 12-foot wide, ones 36 inches wide, or, excuse me, 12 inches wide and 36 inches wide, and we'd just like to stack them out back and not have to place them in the building.
So there'd be nothing out there with the motor that might have gas, diesel, oil, antifreeze?
No junk, no cars, nothing like that.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions for him? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience care to speak to this item? Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Gary Meyer, and I live on the road on 466 Avenue, and I have a question for Kevin to start with. Does any other business out there have a conditional use permit for outdoor storage? Can you name them, or not, offhand?
Yes, the ChemCast has a conditional use permit for outdoor storage, and the property owned by Ralph Tushin has a conditional use permit for, with outdoor storage.
And you asked the question, what they were going to store for outdoor industrial storage. I guess I think that's a question I'd like to have you answer. What is allowed on outdoor industrial storage? Are there any restrictions? Is there anything written? Does it have to run? Does it have wheels? Can it be moved? Can it be driven? Are there any regulations at all? Point taken. And the concern I have is the blue line that Kevin outlined there, that's where they want to put storage. Now, I have nothing against this petitioner. It would be nice if he would stick to his word, but we've been finding that that's not the case out there. The blue line that Kevin outlined, that that will, that is, will be parked, there's no restriction that says that that has to be adhered to. He said they recommend a fence be put up, but that doesn't sound like a requirement. It seems like I was just here. Last month, you voted to deny approval for an outdoor storage on the property located in this exact light industrial complex area. It's frustrating to me why the zoning department would put another item on the agenda and put it on the rubber stamp, approval, and recommend it at that less than a month later. And since last month was contested, why is this one put on the consent agenda, which is supposed to be for uncontested items? I was here last month and contested it. The zoning and planning are the ones that rezoned this area and approved all these businesses, and now they refuse to hold anybody accountable. In the zoning ordinance rules and regulations, in the frequently asked questions section, there's a question that says, is it necessary to contact the planning department before purchasing property? And the response to that question is, and I quote, "The answer is it is strongly recommended so you know what uses are allowed and whether they are in line with your intended use of the property," end quote. So it was responsibility of these property owners to know what they wanted to do with their property, and that what they want to do now is not allowed in a light industrial area. They knew this before purchasing the property. I got a few pictures here.
Kevin's getting them.
Who's has the mouse? Oh, I got a...
You should be able to use the buttons on that.
Oh, the right and left buttons? Okay.
Yeah, right there.
You don't have a zoom, then, I can't zoom in on it? So the property that you denied last month, I just want to start out by showing you what has happened. This is what the property looks like two days ago. The two excavators are still here, the pipe is all here, cement culverts are all here, and it's been here, it's been laying here since more than last summer because the weeds are all there. So that picture doesn't show up very clearly, but here's a whole bunch of more cement culverts. There's the two dump trucks that were there. I pointed out the tanker last month when I was here, the other side is bashed in. And there's a disc right here that has broken disc blades on it. It's still there. Again, here's a broader picture, trash laying out in the ditch. The blue house back here, you asked last week why that resident, if that resident of that house was here, and he wasn't. Well, I found out why, because the owner of this junkyard is basically running him out. He's offering to buy his place. So if you can't win, you buy him out. Follow the money. So that's why he's not here. He's leaving the neighborhood. He's given up. Here's another picture. Again, there's the two dump trucks I pointed out. Here's a pile of trash, and I am standing on the road taking these pictures. So that's how close to the, and it's not really a road, it's a gravel pit haul route. So I don't quite understand how that fits in with the rules either, but that's beyond the scope of this. So there's the gravel trailer that I pointed out last week. The brush for the road is still sitting there, the van is there, the trailer is there. This semi-trailer is here, and if I would have moved over to the right just a little bit, it would have showed you that this door is on, the other half of that door is off. And here, if you count them, there's still eight semi-trucks here. And if you remember last week, one of his arguments for wanting to do it was all this equipment was in running order and ready to be used on his construction season that was coming up. If it's in running order, I don't understand why it's still here, and I don't quite understand why it's still here anyway, because it's, it doesn't seem like he's made any attempt to move it, even though it was denied. And I'm trying to make a point here, I'm continuing on. So to go back to the property in question, I believe this light brown area here is where they, is where the petitioner wants to put his storage. You'll notice the property next to it is already putting heavy equipment out there. Now, unless he has a conditional use permit, he's decided just to put it out there and ask forgiveness rather than permission. And as you're driving along Highway 38 here, the speed limit is 65, I'm standing on the edge of Highway 38. How is anybody ever going to know that this was put on the agenda for tonight? Okay? I didn't know. I'd never seen this sign. I just happened to look at the agenda tonight, but if you look at this, this big sign here that says for sale, if you zoom in on it, right there is the little green sticker sign. Why is that 50, 60 feet off the road? That should be next to the highway where you can see it. The general public would never know this is even on the agenda tonight. Okay, this just shows the equipment off to the left side of this property. This picture doesn't show up very well. And so if you go to the business on the right, which Kevin pointed out, this new business is up here, but what his picture didn't show was he's got all kinds of outdoor storage on his property already as well. So then, to take you a loop around, off to the right here, I guess I can look at this picture up here, off to the right here is the property that you denied last week. And these semi-trucks here, there's a truck repair shop here that repairs semis, so that's on this edge of the property. The same guy, I believe, owns everything behind this fence here. You'll notice there's two taxidermy shops here, and there's two buildings right here. Now, I've never been back in there. I don't know if one taxidermy shop rents one and the other one rents the other, but on the next picture, we'll show you to the west side of this, away from the truck stop here. Here's what's on the west side of that building. And so I walked up to this gate here, the gate is held shut by two tires on the ground, and I walked up and took a, just held my hand through the fence and took a picture. Here's what's behind the taxidermy shop. Now, I thought taxidermy was for stuffing dead animals, not dead vehicles. You'll notice this vehicle here, this white one, that's on a trailer. You notice the cab is gone. This white vehicle here, I will reference that in the next picture. I know I'm getting off track here, but I'll make my point. So here's that vehicle. There's no back wheels, there's, the thing is shot, it's a piece of junk. Now, if you'll notice that little red hood right there where my arrow is, and the back of this trailer right here, here's that red vehicle and the back of this trailer, just to give you reference. Now, if I zoom in here, that says towing in recovery. That's on the back of the taxidermy shop. Is that allowed? Oh, and the tires here, there's tires and rims. It looks like a junkyard. So I'm going to keep going, I'm going to take the next picture off to the right of this, which is a little bit further down. And here's some more dead vehicles for the taxidermy shop. And here's some more. This camper has been down there for, I would say, two, if not three years. It's never moved, except for when they towed it from the back of the lot up to the front to expand their fence. This car looks like it's for a destruction derby. So now I'm going to go back to the right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Jeff.
This has nothing to do with the property.
It does, I'm making a point.
No, no, you've made your point.
But don't you get to the point, sir?
Okay.
Get to the point.
Okay, I will get to it.
Those pictures are the property that is being rezoned.
Okay, let me go further to the west.
Is it of Mr. Scott's property?
I can't make my point without showing what we've got to do with it.
You've made your point, sir.
I think we've seen enough pictures about what you're saying.
Madam Chair, it's out of order.
Talking about other landowners, but not this particular landowner, okay?
I don't know how to make my point without showing the picture of what's going on out there.
Right.
There is, there is, every tenant out there is abusing this, and I can't get anybody, you guys tell me to contact my township. The township says to contact you. You say to contact somebody else. The neighborhood is going to trash, and I don't, and I can't seem to get any help to show that, and now you won't let me finish my demonstration. I had other things to show.
How long will that go?
Three minutes.
I'll time you.
Okay. Hang on. This is on ChemCast. I put in a complaint last week because of the garbage. Imagine what this stuff does in a 50 mile an hour wind. This is a retaining pond from ChemCast. It's supposed to be a water retaining pond. When they built ChemCast, there was a three-foot pipe sticking up here for the water, so that the contaminants from the parking lot would run in there, and it wouldn't run in the surrounding places. They took it out and put in a culvert. Okay, here's looking up the street. Okay, I cannot store anything within 30 feet, 33 feet of the right-of-way on the road. The end of my foot here, that's 33 feet. Look what they're doing. Go up further. This is all the trash. This is all the trash that we look at every time we drive by the road. Again, there's 33 feet, they're storing a cement culvert within the right-of-way. I get fined if I do that. So I got to keep going. Again, here's more trash. You can see the weeds up around it. Nobody takes care of it. Here's the next property. There's a sign. It says, "In 708 density area, there shall be, you can only have 200 square feet on a sign." This one is 288. It's been blank for three years. Here's another sign, same thing. Another sign, same thing. Blank, 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 all over. This is the building that is right to the west of the property that Kevin showed. Notice, there's five lights here, five floodlights. That's my house, way back up here. I can literally pick a shirt out of my closet in the middle of the night from the lights, from these floodlights. It looks like a 747 coming in for a landing. So my point here is I got off subject, but this is why I'm asking you to deny this CUP. There are so many violations going on, and the neighbors are simply tired of letting it continue. And I checked with the other neighbors, they are not here tonight. One had a birthday party for grandkids, one had somebody sick in their house, and the other simply couldn't get off work. And they are quite tired of fighting this because it doesn't seem to do any good. It was zoned light industrial. Let's make the businesses adhere to the rules instead of changing the rules when they move out there. Please turn down this request and help keep the, help keep this neighborhood from looking any worse than it already does.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Is anybody else in the audience care to speak to this item? Does anybody else in the audience care to speak to this item? Step forward, state your name and address.
My name is Cindy Meyer, wife of Gary Meyer, and I will agree, I am sick of the lights. Every time we look out the bedroom windows, all we see are lights from these buildings. As Kevin Holken was saying, that the contingency or the, the plan is that the lights don't be a nuisance. We've complained about the lights on these other structures, they are a nuisance, nothing gets done about it. The other thing I just want to say is that the pictures that he was showing in regards to the taxidermy shops and that junkyard that's behind the fence where nobody can see it, well, what happens down there after hours, or on weekends, or whenever it happens, they put up, they put up targets out in the field, and they're shooting at these targets. They're directly shooting in line of my house. But we can't get any attention out there to anything. They just go to trash and we can't get any attention on it. And that's why we're here, is because you wouldn't want this in your neighborhood and we don't want it in ours. If you have neighbors that aren't mowing their grass, you can complain about it and the city will come out and have somebody mow it. If you've got a property owner that they're putting junk vehicles on, you can complain to the city. You've got ordinances, and we've got ordinances too, but people don't have to comply with them out there. And it's just very frustrating. So thank you.
Anybody else care to speak to this item? Then I'll close the floor.
Madam Chair, maybe Scott would like to respond to some of this.
Please step forward.
Thank you, sir. I guess the complaints thus far have been about other people, my neighbors, my future neighbors, and I'm trying to do things right. I really, really keep a tight shop and a tight outfit, and my employees are great, they do what they're told, and we're super neat. I don't think the problems that this gentleman showed will happen on our property. And I, again, I think it's a few bad neighbors, you know, he did have some good points, there was some messes out there, no doubt about it, but that's not what we're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this item?
Madam Chair.
Okay, Jeff?
Kevin, do we restrict the lighting on this new project at all to be downward pointed? I, I'm distracted from reading the conditions.
Okay. So the conditions, there are seven conditions that staff is recommending for this project, and I'll just go ahead and read through these quick. Gravel must be used to cover all regular driving surfaces of the storage area in accordance with Article 15.04B of the zoning ordinance. All parking and driveways must meet requirements of 1504A of the zoning ordinance, that is the hard surfacing. Three, that the applicant must provide a minimum 90% opaque screen fencing along the south property line. Four, no outdoor storage is allowed north of the rear wall of the building. Number five, no chemicals or petroleum products shall be allowed to be stored outside of the property, outside on the property. Number six, all new replacement outdoor lighting must be fully shielded or cut off to prevent spillage of light off the property. And number seven, the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the facility at any time after proper notice, owner, to ensure the property is in full compliance of the unconditional use permit conditions of approval in many counties' zoning ordinance. As for lighting, you asked about that?
Covered under item six.
Lighting is often part of conditions of approval, but there are no requirements for lighting if there is not a conditional use permit.
So with item seven, where we have the right to enter and inspect the facility at any time, does that apply to the other properties in the area?
If there is a conditional use permit, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for him? Just not?
I guess I'll start, Madam Chair. I denied last month's one for around this area, but I'm not going to let that hold me, hold that against this gentleman here, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to approve it, approve his conditional use permit here.
Madam Chair, I'll second conditional use permit 22-31.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Excuse me, the conditions recommended by staff.
I have a motion and a second to approve conditional use permit 22-31 with all the conditions. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Move on to the regular agenda, which is item number seven, rezoning 22-01 to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District on the property later described as Track D, Eggers Edition, Track 1 Safari Edition, County Auditor's Subdivision, Track 7, and the south 200 feet, Track 6, all in the southeast quarter, southeast quarter, Section 9 Township 102 North, Range 49 West, that is Mapleton Township. Petitioner is Jensen Electric Incorporated, owner is Sorum Holdings 2 LLC. They are located at the Renner intersection of South Dakota Highway 115. Mason?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mason Stephan from County Planning Department. This request is to rezone about 15 acres of property at the, what is called Renner Corner, the northwest part of this corner. The petitioner has stated that the proposed rezoning to the commercial district is to allow for commercial development in the Renner area. It should be noted that this request to rezone largely the same area was heard by both the Planning Commission and the County Commission in 2020, and that request was denied. One of the main concerns at this meeting, or at those two meetings, was that the previous spring was when, it was 2019 when all the flooding occurred in Renner, so there were concerns that this development would add to the flooding problems in the area. The property is not currently in the floodplain, but it could potentially be in the new adopted floodplain maps from FEMA, and the petitioner has stated that two of the four residential properties in the area to the north have been bought by the Sorums, and so there is only those two neighbors currently living close to the proposed commercial development. Due to the controversial meetings that happened last year, we did have a meeting with the petitioner Jensen Electric and DGR Engineering before the Planning Commission meeting, and they submitted several materials to us that addressed their, the main concerns from that meeting. The site plan, which I can show here, shows that there'll be a road running between the county highway to the south and the state highway to the east, and it'll be the one road access. It also shows on this site plan, it's kind of hard to see, they're a little small, but on the south side here, there's these red Xs, and then on the north side here, there's these red Xs. Those are accesses that will be removed by the petitioner in the future if the request is approved and the road is constructed, and that will allow for more streamlined access in the area. All of those accesses have been approved by both the state, the OT, and the county highway department before this meeting. In addition, if you look to the south part of the rezoning here, this property right here that is suggested to be rezoned is currently an apartment complex. If it is rezoned to commercial, that apartment complex would become a non-conforming use in the commercial district, but the petitioner has stated that in the future that apartment complex will be removed at a later date. Furthermore, they did submit a drainage plan at the meeting that we had with them, I'll do this here. If you look at this drainage plan, you see that they are regrading the entire property to direct the drainage through those red drainage easements down to the southwest corner of the property in this detention pond. And the contours listed on this site, or this drainage plan show that the current, the updated contour lines will be above any future floodplain that FEMA adopts in the future. The FEMA floodplain elevation is roughly 1441, and the lowest elevation on this updated contour line is 1446. Even though they would be above the floodplain, they would have to apply for a letter of map revision to be taken out of the floodplain. So if this is approved, if the new maps are ever adopted, all of the county's floodplain requirements would be required if it is, if it does stay in the floodplain and they don't remove it from the floodplain. And that's just what this is showing here. So on the left, you see that the property is not currently listed in the floodplain for the currently adopted map, and on the right is the new one that has not been adopted yet but is proposed. With all this in consideration, the area is designated as a rural service area, which allows for limited convenience commercial development to support rural populations. And they've, the petitioner has also submitted several documents, as I've briefly gone over, that specifically address any concerns from the previous rezoning attempt, and it'll, the proposed rezoning will allow for a more cohesive development of this commercial industrial area. With that, the county planning department does recommend approval of conditional use permit 2201 to rezone the subject property from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District, and I am available for any questions if you have them.
Any questions for him?
So in this, these pictures here?
Yes.
Highway 115 is on the right side there.
This is county high, or this is SD Highway 115, and then this is county.
And the safari restaurant there is just right there. It is, it's the same.
So this is the state highway on the updated map right here, if you can see where my pointer is, and this is the state highway over here, so they mirror each other pretty closely.
Anybody else have any questions?
Maybe later.
Okay. Is the petitioner here? Will you please step forward and state your name and address?
Ron Jensen, Jensen Electric. Business address is 25804 Lindbergh Avenue, Renner. Home address is 25552479th Avenue, Garretson.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for him?
I have a brief thing I could read if you have time. So as you're aware, there, as Mason had mentioned, this was proposed in 2020 briefly after the 2019 flood that had most kind of unprecedented, where the ground was frozen, we had a heavy rain that blocked some culverts going under 115, which caused some flooding issues that were unique to that particular event. So there was a lot of emotions surrounding that, the timing of that last request. What we're doing now is a different, different approach, is taking all of the items that were basically brought out during that meeting and some that hadn't even been brought up during that and tried to address them prior to that. So we were approached by the Sorums. We've, Jensen Electric's our shop, we're right to the south of the Renner Corner, just to the south of that intersection. We've been developing and building all the buildings along 115 there, so Midwest Livestock Systems, Global Distributing, and Archer's Addiction, which will be, Archer's Connection will be opening here shortly. So we're just looking to kind of find another place to continue to do kind of what we're doing, doing there. We were approached by the Sorums to kind of help with this process, and we reached out to DGR Engineering, have a bunch of conversations about how to kind of address all the concerns of this area to allow for development and also to kind of allow for improvement, improvement and correcting kind of some old, you know, a lot of things that in the past had been done that, that could have been done better. So the idea to rezone that stems from a couple of different things. To try to improve the drainage and to create better and safer access from that intersection is those red Xs that are crossed out, as everybody knows, there's, you know, that, that wouldn't be allowed by today's, by today's rules to have those accesses that approach, that close to the intersection. So the owners and, and as the developer, trying to kind of be proactive about, about trying to create a better way for people to get to the safari, to the Renner Corner, to the apartment that's there, and to any and all future stuff that we do, just make it a safer, safer, cleaner intersection. So we reached out to the DOT, County Highway, had conversations about how best to try to address this and to transition it to a more conforming, conforming and safe intersection. Also with the mindset that we don't know when, but I'm sure with the growth that we're seeing, at some point 115 will likely need to be widened, 258 potentially might need to be widened, and if that day ever comes, that would greatly impact the entire operation in that corner. So if we weren't proactive in trying to come up with a better way to, to do that, we're just trying to stave off problems down the road. So the, the other thing that, the only thing that's currently planned is on Lot 5 there, which is just inside of the curve. If this is approved and we get through the remaining steps of the development process, is to build a new facility for the Renner Corner to process their jerky, as their, everybody here knows their jerky's really good and a lot of people want it, and they can't make it fast enough, so trying to build them a new building so they can do that better and more efficiently, with the idea to continue to kind of go with that. One point to note is that apartment, that's actually zoned ag right now, so it really should have never been allowed to be built there in the first place. And if you notice on the bottom end of that, they've got off-street parking that just pulls directly off of 258, and their mailboxes are right along 258, which is, both the mailman and all the traffic are out there, don't, it's just not a very safe thing. So also part of this proposal is basically closing that off, giving them a better access, and then long-term, the plan is to do something different with that property down the road. So like I mentioned before, we met with the DOT, and they've agreed to allow the access as shown, met with County Highway, they agreed to allow access as shown. If this zoning goes through, we'll officially apply for those permits. Drainage and grading, we've paid kind of extra special attention to that due to, due to just the stereotypes that come along with Renner and water and flooding. The issues that a lot of people had in 2020, if you look on that, the top of that drawing, just off, just off to the right on 115, there's some culverts that run under 115, and what had happened, which caused that flooding, which affected some of the properties just to the north of Safari and, and some other ones as well, was those culverts were blocked with ice, which backed up the water and caused it to flood, to pool up on the, on the other side of 115, on the east side, actually came over the road because the culverts were plugged. So the water that affected everyone during that time came from the east, it really wasn't drainage that came off of the, what we're trying to develop. And as we do try to develop, what we're taking is to attempt to take the drainage that's here, and it naturally goes to the northwest with a little bit going to the southwest, is to not alter that, but just make sure that it doesn't adversely affect anyone surrounding. We reached out and talked to, in the letter that we're required to send, we sent another letter to all the landowners as well, inviting them to visit and come and talk to us about any concerns they have and show them what we're building, why we're building it, how we're dealing with all the drainage. Of the 41 that we sent, 15 of them reached out and I met with or spoke with by phone. They were all, once they understood the drainage issue and they understood where the water came from and how we're taking extra efforts to make sure that doesn't adversely affect them, those 15 were okay. 25, we had no response. We had 11 other residents that weren't within the district but were local that asked, they were all okay. And we just had one that was one of the property owners on the northwest corner that was concerned about the drainage. We had conversations and tried to explain what we were, we were doing with that, but that was the only negative that we had, that we had heard so far, so. So, that's, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for him?
Madam Chair, I was just wondering, you're gonna try and bring the water down to that corner in that retention pond, was that the goal then, to the southwest there?
Some water, so from lot one, block one.
Yeah.
The natural flow is kind of to the southwest right there. So whatever water would come from that would be contained within that retention pond that we'd add in that corner. Everything roughly in lot two, block one, the natural flow is kind of to the north and anything.
Does that got a natural place to go, I mean, to get away there decent or, or not?
Well, right now, it's just a cornfield, so it's just got a gradual drainage. But our, our intent is, again, the only thing we're building right now is lot five. Anything that we build on lot one through four, we would make sure that there's proper drainage between the lots, depending upon what we build, the size of the building, the size of the parking lot. We make, we, everything that we've done so far and everything we continue to do, we intend to work with, with the DGR to make sure that the drainage is all done to the best of our ability and make sure that no, nothing coming off this is adding, adding to anything that's not already there.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So are we building up the lots to keep them above the floodplain?
Well, so currently, it's not shown in the floodplain, and I think everybody here knows why that FEMA map is being adjusted currently.
Does the land across highway one fifteen, does that belong to the, the Hou guards or, why don't we ever build over there higher?
Well, that's Berg family to the east, I believe. But as far as in regards to this, so FEMA's in the process of doing their design, but it's not finalized and officially adopted. Currently, it's not in there. And I'm probably summarizing a little bit, but when FEMA does their maps, they don't, they mostly use GPS data, which isn't terribly accurate. What DGR has done is they went out there and actually taken more accurate measurements. We believe that according to their, where they're saying their frontal elevation is going to be, every part of this is above that. So our intent is to follow the process to submit their data to FEMA to prevent this from ever being added to the floodplain in the first place.
Okay, any other questions for you?
Madam Chair. When would you anticipate removing that apartment building?
There isn't a time set for it. One thing we want to make sure of is any of the residents that are there are given ample time to, to find something different, but I can't give you a precise date.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is David Condon, I live right there, two-five-seven-eight-nine Lindale Road, Renner. So I'd like to re-comment on the rezoning. We have serious.
You please speak upstairs so he can hear you.
Oh, we have serious concerns about rezoning from agricultural to business. As you're all aware, there's inflation going on right now, and a lot of that comes from a low supply of goods, particular, in particular food. And even the president is warning about possible food shortages. And I realize that this is only fifteen acres of land, but I think agricultural land should be protected very strongly, especially under current circumstances and the increasing population that's coming into the country. Furthermore, we fear that changing such a large tract of Renner from agricultural to business will radically change the rural atmosphere of Renner. We fear urban sprawl and we don't want the increased traffic. Now, I wish, I truly wish Jensen Electric all the best. I have no qualms against them, but just please take our concerns and just please listen to our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, thank you for listening. I'm Nancy Rasmussen, I live at two-five-seventy-one four-seventy-fifth Avenue, Renner. And I'm that little tiny corner lot at the far north of their plant on the east, right behind their property. He stated that DOT caused the flood in twenty-nineteen because the culverts were blocked with ice. I'd like to see the proof of that, that DOT was responsible because I feel with the higher land on the east side of highway one fifteen being higher and it flooded, everything come this way. Also, there was three other floods in Renner that flooded the town of Renner in the same year, twenty-nineteen. Three total floods. This land has wildlife, it has livestock to the north, livestock to the west along the tree line, or wild deer and whatever wildlife there is. And they did their study for drainage. I don't feel that's an accurate drainage program that they've set up. It's going to be ditches and one retention pond. The retention pond and the ditches didn't stop the flood in twenty-nineteen from coming that way. My house got flooded, the basement got filled up with dirt. When the water receded from the flood, it came from the south toward the north to my yard. Everybody else's water receded, it ended up right in my yard. It even come through the neighbor's fence over in my yard. I was totally flooded, I can't grow anything there. Try to put a garden, even growing it in pots, it doesn't work. So there is actually three neighbors there, not two. The one other house, it's my house, the James's house, and another house. The lady died two months ago. Her son has that property, it hasn't bought, nobody's bought that, that I'm aware of. I mean, I see two young people in the yard there. And what about the noise and building that pavement up? If they pave all that, they would have to build it at a slant like this from the north coming down to the south to keep the drainage from their paved lots coming over in my backyard onto the easement. There's not enough green space there and the elevation isn't tall enough. It isn't high enough. It's going to flood my property, my house that I've lived there thirty-seven years. I mean, I have a lot more I could say, but I know you guys are tired, I'm tired. It's just not feasible for me. I feel it's going to have an adverse effect on my property with noise pollution. They plan supposedly not only a jerky plant there that's big, but where's Renner Corner going to go for their deer, for their butchering, for their meat locker? Where would that be? Where would their gas station be? Because it was said in a conversation with Mr. Jennings that DOT was going to put a four-lane highway through there, which would take part in my yard because they're allowed to do that. And it would take Renner Corner out. So that's why those red Xs are there, they're moving that apartment. Where would those people go? There's parking behind that apartment, it's not parking on the street. It's parking behind that apartment and around. And, and the parking lot, there's a huge parking lot there on both, on one, on the north side of Renner Corner. They've bought all the property there, they come up with a fantastic plan, fantastic, you know, intentions, but in the long run, the noise, the pollution, the driving away the wildlife and their pay, their building up, it's going to all come right back in my yard. I don't have very good fences there anymore because they were ruined with the flood. I can't afford to put up another fence. I'm retired, I don't get big massive million dollars to have a project put in front of you guys that it's going to be damaging to me, it would devalue my property, it's not going to make it better for my property getting better. I would have to move and put that as a commercial property and who's going to buy that? Nobody. Nobody's going to do it. And our, I'm on the Renner sanitary board. Our sewer system is old. It is extremely old and our pumps, pumping stations are old. They were told that due to the capacity of the one building, that they would consider letting them hook up to the sewer. There's been no mention of what other businesses are going to go there, our sewer lines can't hold it. Who's going to end up paying for the pipes and the pumps when they break? The homeowners. Our sewer has went from twenty dollars a month when I lived there to seventy-five dollars a month right now. And if those sewer lines break and we have to repair them, it all, the damage falls on the property owners to pay for that. So my sewer bill might be a hundred dollars a month or more. So I do have notes, if you'd like to see them. There's a lot more I could talk about, but I don't want to. It's, I'm frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, don't go away.
Please come back.
I'm sorry.
Somebody has some questions for you.
I want to ask her a question.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So, did you testify a couple of years back then when the other project? And didn't you say that your house sank in the sand a few inches?
Because the, my yard has no soil. It's all flooded from that side coming down. I have no front yard, it's all gravel. Might be a little bit of green, but not much. That back field from when the Renner sanitary did a project two miles from where they are, that is a little bit of topsoil, sandy underneath, no rocks on this side of the road, nothing to hold that. So it, it sinks. I put gravel in the front yard to fill potholes. It, eventually the potholes and mud is back again from the, from the gravel, from the rain. And I'm fairly certain that the four properties that Jensen built was also built before they put in an application to take that off as a flood zone. The entire whole area is flood, flood zone. I mean, I've, I've seen more than the twenty-nineteen flood when I've lived there, the ground just keeps sinking. I mean, they might have their nice little pavement there, but eventually it'll sink.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else care to speak to this item?
Priscilla Green, two-five-seven-eight-one-four-seventy-fifth, Renner.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Priscilla Green, two-five-seven-eight-one-four-seventy-fifth Avenue, Renner, South Dakota. Okay, so I only have a few things here. I know that he had hired DNR to come out there and survey the land, but you have to realize this is a drought season. To do a survey, I feel like that should be maybe several years' worth of, of, of knowledge to say, hey, this isn't really bad this year. I feel like it is a drought season to, to know that, you know, if there is water and if FEMA's redoing their map, they really should use the statistics over like a twenty-year frame or ten-year frame, not just, you know, within the last year. That's basically the, the main thing that I was more concerned about, just because I know that they did hire them and, and that would be something that they're probably going to bring up to you, so I just want you to consider that. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this item?
Sure.
Come forward, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Yulia Condon. My address is two-five-seven-eight-nine Lindale Road, Renner. So I live right across the street from the place where they want to build all this giant industrial complex. And my main concern is, right now, Renner is a nice rural area, that's why we got property there, that's why, where we want to raise our family, God gives us. And if they're gonna change it into, is they gonna to take fifteen acres of land and change it from farm into industrial, our town will not be a town for comfortable life, our property will become, I don't know, we're just going to live near the factories, that's just, that's just unfair to us. That, that's my main concern, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Petitioner, you care to, have any comments? Please step forward.
Madam Chair, let me ask him a question while he gets up there. Where are the two properties you guys purchased that, you bought a couple of the houses, right? To get rid of them?
Right where, right where the extension of Lindbergh connects onto one fifteen. So right there, there's two, it's one lot, but there's a house and a trailer house there.
Thanks.
Thank you to you guys for bringing up your concerns. So for David and Yulia, I want you to know that I'm, I farm also, so I'm very sensitive to the same issues that you're, that you're concerned about as well. I think the same thing, but at the same time, there also has to be some places for, for things to be built and things to be done. And there's definitely an argument for, for where that should be and shouldn't be, but just know that I'm sensitive to that same issue that you are as well. And the only thing I can really do to kind of assure that it's not going to be, that we're not petitioning to convert it to industrial use, we're petitioning to convert it to commercial use, which has some pretty significant restrictions on the type of things that can be there. So the type of buildings, for example, that we have in mind are very similar to what we've already been building with the Jensen Electric and the other four buildings. Hopefully, they're not making you feel that your residence isn't as rural and friendly as you are. I mean, my hope is to build them to the best of the ability to make sure that they're aesthetically pleasing. Everything is stored ins, inside, nothing is, nothing is an eyesore, nothing is a noise hazard, nothing is a, anything that's going to affect anybody's life around there. So thanks for bringing your concerns, but that, I hope that, that that would help a little bit. Nancy and, and Priscilla, I know I spoke with Nancy at the Renner sanitary meeting and just some of the things that we had kind of talked about. Again, like we had mentioned, the flood in question, the water that affected everyone there came from the east, not from, not from this property. And as the floodwaters were receding, it was again still all water that came from the east in the first place. So it wasn't necessarily anything that was, was created from the property that we're trying to rezone. As it addressed livestock, Randy Hofer's the one that has the property right to the north there with the pasture and the waterway that those culverts spill out into. He has the longhorn cattle there, we approached him, explained to him what we're doing, and he had no issues or concerns with, with what we're doing there. We have no concerns with his longhorns there, they're, they're fun to look at. As far as noise and that sort of thing, everything that we plan on building is all going to be, again, to the same standards of what we've done with the other four buildings that we have. Everything inside, everything, you know, not creating any noise or light pollution or anything. The concerns that were brought forth earlier about the light as electrician, I'm very well aware of that, so anything we've been doing on our buildings and continue to do would be, if it's facing a property, there'll be the cutoff type lights that don't, don't affect anybody else. So whether that's a requirement or not, we're gonna, we're gonna do that anyways. In regards to the, addressing the locker concerns, phase one that we'd like to do this year, if everything goes according to plan, is again, the facility to process just jerky and occasionally the deer trim that we might, that they might get during, during the season, just to help run it through the smoker faster, to be able to process deer quicker. A potential phase two would be to add on an entirely new, build a new locker attached to that facility. There is no current plan to do that, but that is a hope to do that at some point in the future. Again, with the intention that everything would be inside, everything would be, be an improvement on, on the existing. As far as the gas station in the, in the future, that, again, that's down the road a ways, but we're, we're concerned that at some point in the future, the accesses to the, to that are going to be restricted due to improvements to the road or, you know, heaven forbid, there's a bad accident there that, that leads for a cause to, to speed up the desire to change that. So again, trying to be proactive on that. Again, everything that we're doing with the design is with the intent to not adversely affect anyone there, drainage or, or otherwise. The parking thing, part of the intention for doing this is the parking lot on the north side of the safari, we'd be giving remote access off of Frontage Road from, that would connect to there, so people wouldn't be turning into the safari directly off one fifteen. There'd be a access to the parking from a more safer route. The parking lot to the apartment, there is a parking lot there, what we're doing is we're accessing. lot there. What we're doing is we're accessing that parking lot from, again, the new street being built, so it's not coming off of 258. So, it's a safer, a safer entrance into the apartment, as long as the apartment remains there. The parking in that isn't going to change. It's just going to be accessed differently. The sewer, she had mentioned about, that the sewer's old and can't handle it, or the intention going to that meeting on the 19th was to get a, internal conversations that we had prior was to get a letter certifying from Renner sanitary that they can serve this and have no issues. And that was voted on and approved at that meeting, and that letter was given to, was forwarded to Scott. So, we have a letter from Renner sanitary saying that they can adequately serve what we're doing here.
Did Roger Shibe then get federal funding for repairs to the system up there? And is it repaired after the floods?
There's, I'm, I probably couldn't speak to that. DGR could probably speak better, but I believe they've, they had secured funding and did quite a bit of stuff to it. The details on that, I, and when she was mentioning that our shop was in the flood zone too. So, everything from 258 south, FEMA has finalized. So, they did their study, finalized it prior to COVID. Their intent was to do everything from 258 to the north. They still have not completed that. It's still basically under the study period. So, where our shop is, is not and will not be in the, even in the new flood plain. Again, has nothing bearing on this really, but just making a point. And as far as the, being a drought, the survey that we did to determine the elevation had nothing to do with whether it's dry or wet out. It had to do with elevation. So, what we're trying to prove to FEMA is that everything within this, this proposed commercial thing that we're requesting is above their new proposed flood plain. So, hopefully that addresses all the points.
Any questions for him? Guess not. Thank you. Anybody else care to speak to this item again? You want to step forward?
From the, I'd like to see his letter.
State your name and address.
I'm sorry, Nancy Rasmussen, 25781-475th Avenue, Renner. I am on the Renner sanitary board. There was no vote that they will get to use the sewer. It will be considered for five buildings if the capacity does not overload our sewer system. Our sewer cannot hold a meat locker, the jerky plant, the gas station, or what other businesses. There, it's like 2,500 gallons a day is the most, without overtaxing. And FEMA deemed the Jim Quinn's property, right where the road is, they condemned his house because of the flood. He had to move. So, FEMA took that property, and two years later, they sold it on a sheriff auction. It was sold then. So, with, with that little bit of drainage project that they have there, my house is squeezed in between Highway 115, maybe being a four-lane highway, losing part of the front, like I said, but it's also squeezed in those blocks there for the back part for flooding. When that water comes off, it's not going to have anywhere to go. It'll stay right in my yard. And that's all I have to say on that. They were not voted that they could hook up to the sewer system, though. It would be, it's a consideration on the amount of gallons they use per day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You want to come, yeah?
Here's a letter that we received from Renner sanitary stating that the findings that the additional sanitary sewer capacity for proposed Renner Corner commercial development is within Renner sanitary design capacity as presented at the board meeting. The conversation that we had, Scott and I were at that meeting, had to do with, in conjunction with what many, great conversation we had with Minnehaw Rural Water, the condition that they had is they can serve this development as long as none of the individual lots produce more than 20,000 gallons per month, which is a very easy thing for us to accommodate. Our shop, for example, at Jensen Electric, our water bill is an average of about 1,000 gallons a month. So, Minnehaw Community Water is saying they can supply 20,000 gallons per lot without us going back and asking them to review it. So, that was what we had discussed at, at the Renner sanitary meeting, and then also in conjunction with kind of what the maximum capacities could be. Due to that, they had a conversation and voted to send us the, the letter here, which I have a copy, and we gave the, gave to Scott here, too.
Thank you.
Engineer's name is Scott, so I did not attend the meeting with him. I don't think he introduced him, so I just want to make sure you understood it wasn't he did.
And Minnehaw Rural Water, their guy's name is Scott, too.
Okay. Guess I'll close the floor, commissioners?
I have a, Madam Chair, I have a question for Mason.
Sure.
That I maybe should know the answer to, but, okay, I'm back to the apartment building. So, it's a non-conforming use. So, if we approve this, are we, in effect, giving a conditional use for this apartment building? Or what does that mean? I mean, what are we approving regarding the apartment building?
So, the apartment building will, as a non-conforming use, is allowed to stay. It's not really necessarily a conditional use permit or any other permit. It would just be labeled in kind of like how Ron said, it's a apartment building in the A1 district. So, technically, it's already a non-conforming use. So, it'd just be a non-conforming use now in the commercial district, which just, basically, non-conforming uses just aren't allowed to repair if they're 100% destroyed, and you're restricted on making things larger or, or improvements. But other than that, those are really the restrictions on what non-conforming uses are. But it would be another permit.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, commissioners?
You guys look like zombies. Okay, I'll say something. Renner has been a, a real pain, actually. It's flooding all the time. The county has to spend money sending sheriffs, people out there, blocking off the roads, sandbagging, all this kind of stuff. It should never have been put there. That said, I've said this, these guys all heard this. Our county is not a museum. It's going to change. Roads are going to be bigger. There's going to be more traffic. There'll be a million people living in this county by the end of this century. Right now, there's only a couple hundred thousand. But in 19, in 1870, Chicago was 100,000 people, right after the Civil War. A hundred years later, in 1970, the metro area was three and a half million. I don't think we're going to get to three and a half million. But Sioux Falls will be built up at least to Midway Corner, and there'll probably be McDonald's and Walmarts all the way beyond that. Change is going to happen. My hope would be that we move the fire station across Highway 115 to higher ground and slowly allow the city of, of Renner to stop being there because it's just a pain. And, you know, you're not paying the taxes for an annual flood at your property there. That doesn't mean that you don't have issues. You shouldn't be bought out or anything. But along Highway 115, there's, is some expectation for growth. And so, I see the, the, the electrical building there and all that as being a step forward. I see the locker as being archaic, and it needs to be moved probably further north and west. So, I'm probably going to support this, this plan. Go ahead, give me your speech. I forgot to say, it's, it's not zoned museum. It's going to change.
Ma'am Chair?
Doug?
I'd echo what Scott said. I mean, things are going to change regardless, and it's, it's not going to stay. You know, do we want to live in conditions that our grandparents lived in? No. And that's just the same thing that's happening here. Modernization improves things. It may not look like it now, but in the long run, it will. So, I'm in favor of this.
Any other comments? Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve. I'll let you read the legal description.
You don't need to read the legal.
Teasing her.
Yes, that's what I will do, yes. Do I have a second?
One second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning of 2201 to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight. I am, been informed that that item has been withdrawn.
Just a motion to acknowledge the withdrawal.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to approve item number eight, which was withdrawn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Any old business?
Yeah, just given what was indicated earlier about not doing anything out at Highway 38, I just wanted to inform you that after the last meeting, we did send a letter to the person that we had denied the request. We gave them till last week, and we are in the process. I mean, it's a continuing process when you do code enforcement. So, it's not like we have turned a blind eye out there. And Kevin has met with Mr. Meyer several times out there, going through things. So, I will tell you that we are doing code enforcement. It's just that sometimes it is not to the speed of what people think it should happen. So, it, but we are.
There's equipment on the north side now that, I believe, that same tract there. Correct or not, or is it just what they did dirt work there with or something? I don't, I don't, felt the first time I've been by there in quite a few months, I guess. So, I just, I wasn't sure what had been there before or not, I guess.
Yeah.
You know, up close to the highway, you know, close to 38 there, on the north end of it.
Yeah, there's been some dirt work on that north side and that, that broom that kind of, that they built. I think the, the landowner has plans for that. But, yeah, I think that there's some storage there. We did approve a temporary use on the property for a asphalt batch plant for road construction along the interstate, and that's a one-year deal.
So, that's probably what it is.
And it might be something with that.
They're doing there. Okay.
So, we are, we do, we do respond?
Yeah.
No new business? Okay. I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Has a few more slides he wants us to see.